Good evening. We'll call this meeting of the Galt City Council to order. Roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Payne.
I'm here.
Councilmember Hewer.
Here.
Councilmember Campion.
Here.
Councilmember Powers.
Yeah.
Mayor Cruz.
Here. You can all rise for a silent prayer followed by our flag salute by Ms. Linkler. Okay, can we get the video statement, please?
This meeting of the Galt City Council will be cable cast on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel, on the Comcast Consolidated Communications and AT&amp;T Universe cable system. Tonight's meeting will air Friday, October 21st at 9:00 a.m. and Saturday, October 22nd at 9:00 a.m. It is being closed captioned and will be webcast at www.sacmetrocable.tv. The city council meeting videos are also archived on the city's website at www.cigalt.ca.us. A DVD copy is available for checkout from any library branch.
Very well, thank you. Do we have any agenda approvals, additions, or deletions? I would like to, at the, uh, the head of the council move K1 to, after the consent calendar, if you'd like.
Good idea.
All right. Moving on to presentations. Community of Pure Coalition.
We have one additional truly outstanding individual that wasn't able to come to the last meeting where we recognized those who were honored for pride and community, but I'd like to call that individual forward now. And it's Tim McCabe, and it's a grind. I just like to read what was written about you. So outstanding. It's a grind, has been a part of the Galt community for 13 years and has always taken great pride in the Galt community. Showing pride and support, It's a Grind Coffee House and owner Tim McCabe have generously donated coffee to almost every organization in the Galt area, including the local marathon to help UC Davis Children's Hospital in Sacramento, through the local group Tiny Smiles, a pancake breakfast for 300 people at a local elementary school, Galt Relay for Life, as well as several others in need of support, and providing hot water for the hot chocolate served at Lighting of the Night event. Each year, It's a Grind supports the Teacher Appreciation Week in Galt, going to many of the schools and making drinks for all the teachers during their breaks. It has hosted local bike club events, sponsored sports teams, and encouraged local fundraising outside the store. It's a grind is a big reason that Liberty Ranch High School has sold a large volume of loyalty cards to support their athletic programs, as it offers a discount if they buy a card from the school and show It's a Grind support when making a purchase. The local fire, police, paramedics, and the state of California prison guard training facility are all loyal customers that have been embraced since opening in 2003. Tim also volunteers at the local high schools each year for their mock job interviews to help young students get experience applying for employment. Donations totaling up to $10,000 a year have been given for all the local causes. It's a grind always has a warm welcome for everyone that comes through its doors, making it a go-to social spot in Galt for all ages. It's a grind and owner Tim McCabe are true models showing pride and community. And Tim and It's a Grind were nominated by Galt Shop Local.
Congratulations.
Commission on Aging Annual Report. Allen Roberts.
I just wanted to tag you before you and let you a little bit of what's happening, what's going on with the Commission on Aging. It's your commission, so I'm going to stay with it. Uh, start right off with our mission, the purpose and function is to act like a form for matters, for the concern for the senior citizens of Galt and the city and the community around it. We want to be the, we are the advocates for the, uh, for the aging, a focal point within the city, to help issues relating to housing, recreation, nutrition, and general well-being of the citizens of Galt. Also, for the other side of it, we want to be the aging, the aging citizens of Galt advocate. We want to be the advocates for the citizens, and we come to you with something we see that needs, we think needs to be taken care of. Next slide. This slide here is, uh, we talk about is the senior population of Galt, and, uh, this is all from Wikipedia, and they came out of it that says ages 45 and older, about thirty, about one-third of the population of Galt, then that, about 8,000 in that area, a little bit more. Of that, there's about 7.6% of it is 65 years and older, or just about 2,000 people somewhere in that area, which I thought was interesting, is that they have under 18, about 7.1, or just about 1,800. So they're just about even for over 65 and under 18. But if you'll notice in that, the age 45, 50 and older, those guys are coming fast. I mean, that's going to be, what, 6,000, 6,000 people, just if we stay like we are, that's coming on within 10 years, they're going to be in the senior group. So we're, it's coming fast. Excellent. Uh, Commission on Aging, uh, I said 2015, but it's really 2015 slash 16, you know, we're in the middle of a year. We developed an introduction and informational manual for the new commissioners, so they'll have something in hand that they can, not only what you have already in our charter, but also a more of a handbook that they can use and references and committees and things that they need to go, and people we may need to know. We did numerous visits to other cities, other city senior centers, it's hard to say. We've been to Lodi, Elk Grove, Stockton, Palm Springs, and Quartzsite, Arizona. That sounds funny, but they really have a great senior center in the center there, even though it's a little place, population explodes in the winter, and they just have a real thing going on. Now, we go over the next one that says our findings here, this last year. We need to appoint commissioners to vacate seats. We had two vacant seats, I understand, tonight we're going to have one of them, so that's great. We, we need the people, for seniors, and it takes a lot of us to get little things done, because it takes a long time for us to get going anymore. Uh, we need an annual information and health fair event. We're trying, planning on putting it on in the fall, we want to get her doing the fall. We, we tried the spring two years, and we just didn't get any participation to speak of, just not enough. So we're going to try the fall, maybe we won't have so much competition, it'd be a little bitter for us. And we're trying to partner up with another organization so we can get the, the people out to the participation. If we do, we can bring in other people, the Lions Club with their eye trailers and, and the hearing and stuff, you know, a lot more participation if we can just get the, get the people going. Then the other thing is we need, we need a dedicated senior center facility is needed. And that takes me to my next one. Uh, we need a full-time senior center. We need a dedicated senior facility for their use. It's just like a boys' and girls' club or anything else, it'd be a senior club, it's just for the guys, they can come in and they can spend all day if they want there, or they don't, or come in and out, can play cards, they got their own things, uh, it's, as you go to these other places, you'll see it, and you just can't believe what, uh, the environment is, the people communicating, and they're, they're, they're working together, you know, they're not, they're just not tied up in their little houses anymore, they're out there doing things, because they got their place and they can come down to it. And with that, we need a dedicated staff to oversee it. Now, I'm not talking about a big staff, like in Elk Grove, they have three, three people there. The rest of it's volunteers. And, uh, and I was at Calaveras County, and they have, they got three people, and one of them's a full-time cook, and the other one is a, is administrator, and then they got a part-time guy, and that's the three people, that's all they need. And those ones, those, there's, there's two different types of, of clubs, senior centers. There's the kind that are chartered and they're, and they've got their own board of directors, and they just, an individual club, and they, they, they get money from the, the city or county, gives them money to do things with, and then they have their own thing. The other ones, like we have in Galt set up, it's under, like, the Parks and Recs Department, it's just a part of that, and it works from there. Both of them seem to work all right, it's just whichever way, being a small town, I would say we start off with the little one, with the Parks and Recs, but that's just an idea. And then a central place for information activities. If we had our own place, we'd have our own, you could stay in there and you have your kitchen, doesn't bother the kitchen anything, but there's a lot to talk about it, but there's a lot to go, of the things that we can do. It just needs to be their own, own place. I think it'd be, no, we can talk about it later more if we want to, but. That's what's happening today with the Commission on Aging, and, uh, I'll be back next year to talk to you again. So thank you very mu, oh, any questions?
No, I was just going to say thank you for your commitment, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Allen.
It's all right.
Okay, we'll move on to public comment.
Under Government Code Section 549, 54.3, members of the public may address the council on non-agenda items. Speakers may address council on any agenda item during consideration of the item. Speakers shall restrict their comments to issues that are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city council and limit comments to a maximum of five minutes. Please fill out a speaker sheet located on the table inside the entrances to the council chambers and forward the completed speaker sheet to the clerk.
Okay, and we have one speaker sheet. Deetra Cotton.
Good evening, Mayor Cruz and city council members. Hello, my name's Deetra Cotton, a lifelong person in the city in which I reside, who has been coming to the Galt Flea Market for many, many years. I love this particular market because it is approximately 25 to 30 minutes from my city. I come before you tonight to let you know that I believe I can be a huge asset to your Galt Flea Market, as well as something different for your patrons to enjoy. I have been in business for over 35 years, I do fairs for a living, am currently the only black-owned business in the fair industry, throughout the state of California. I started in the year of 1980 at California State Fair, in which we are still there. We have been on man versus food, and in so many newspapers, and in so, on, on so many country stations for having the best catfish and southern food. I have visited your flea market over the years, and there are only dominantly two types of food, Chinese-American food and Mexican-American food. Well, I believe I can add some southern cooking. More people would attend knowing that they could get some good southern cooking. I have held a business license for over 35 years and come fully equipped to cater or do any job. I'm asking the mayor and the city council's member to please consider giving me a try, and also the patrons who travel from all across California to come to this amazing market, to have a different variety of food. Everyone loves some southern cooking. I recently put my daughter in business, and the name of the business is Chevelle's Southern Cookies. If you have ever been to the California State Fair, my business name is Minnie's Cornbread House, and we are known for southern catfish, green, hush puppies, et cetera, we do southern food. We have been in all the big major fairs in California, the Los Angeles County Fair, the Turlock Fair, the Big Fresno Fair, just to name a few, we've been in over 30 fairs. I came before council tonight so I can put a smile on your face with some good southern cooking at your Galt Flea Market. I have some business cards that I'm going to give you, and I hope you find in your hearts and the Galt Flea Market to let me in with some southern cooking. I don't need a lot of space, I can work out of a 10 by 10 tent. I will get all the necessary paperwork and come with a million-dollar insurance policy. My daughter is in St. Mary's High School in Stockton, California, and she is a junior there right now. She has a cumulative GPA of 3.5 and higher, and she wants to go to Stafford to be a pharmacist. Her desire is to attend Stafford because she believes that she could help in the, with the pharmacy area in this area that we live in. And with God's help, she will accomplish her goal. Thank you for listening, and I hope to hear from you real soon with this wonderful opportunity for your patrons and myself to bring a new look and taste to your Galt Flea Market. Thank you, and may God bless you.
Thank you, Deetra.
Thank you.
Moving on to consent. Do I have a motion to accept?
I'll move.
I have a motion by Vice Mayor Payne, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Hewer. Call for the vote, please.
Vice Mayor Payne.
Aye.
Councilmember Hewer.
Aye.
Councilmember Campion.
Aye.
Councilmember Powers.
Aye.
Mayor Cruz.
Aye, assuming that ends vote. Okay, we'll move on to K1, which is Commission on Aging Member Appointment.
Mm-hmm. This is an appointment made, um, by Vice Mayor Payne, um, councilman, I'm, excuse me, commission, commission member Aggie Hatchi moved out of the city limits back in June 2016, and now we have an applicant to take that position. His name is Robert Ballier, and he's in the audience. This, uh, position would expire when you left office in December of 2016, just so you know.
Okay. Would you like to come forward and introduce yourself? I received an email from you expressing interest, your interest, and I'm glad you responded. Even though the period is short, you'll have to reapply.
Okay, that's fine.
Okay.
Thank you. Uh, first of all, thank you, city council, especially Vice Mayor Barbara Payne. I also want to thank you for our little relationship we have in terms of communicating with each other over the past couple of years on garbage in the area. Thank you for coming through for me every time.
You're welcome.
And I am very honored if you, uh, consider me for this position, and if, um, appointed, I will do my very level best to help the, uh, senior community in Galt to achieve, or the, and the commission to achieve its goals stated in the mission statement. Thank you very much to the gentleman that, uh, made the introduction for this, for this particular commission, and, uh, thanks for allowing me to address the council. And, uh, thank you very much for your part, uh, Lori, also. Thank you very much, ma'am.
Okay, uh, with the council's approval, I would like to appoint this, this district appointment gentleman. Okay.
Sounds great.
Okay, congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to I-1, Strategic Plan Update, Capital Improvement Program Status Update, and Annual Comprehensive Economic Development Strategy Report. Mouth full?
Yeah. Is this on? Thank you. Good evening, mayor, members of council, Jean Palazzo, city manager, uh, for the city. And this evening, uh, staff is going to be, uh, uh, reporting out and presenting the quarterly strategic plan update, the quarterly capital improvement plan update, and the annual comprehensive economic development strategy report. A little bit different than, uh, what you've received in the past. The, uh, strategic plan, uh, process is a process that the city council goes through on an annual basis to take a look at, you know, what are the, uh, mission, vision, values, goals, uh, objectives, and priorities for our city as we progress, uh, through the year. Uh, what we've stated to the councils, that we come back to the council on an annual, or quarterly basis to report out, you know, on our progress, uh, with certain items on that. We've also, uh, uh, relayed to the council that we'd come back and report on a quarterly basis on our capital improvement plan. So those, you know, is what you, you know, receive on annual, or on a quarterly basis. At this point, we've, um, you know, Ms. Vandez has been working on our comprehensive economic development strategy, which is a document, uh, she'll, you know, talk, talk about that a little bit, uh, later in the presentation tonight, uh, that is, uh, submitted to the Economic Development Administration on an annual basis with an update, and that kind of takes a look at our entire economic development strategy. Uh, all, all of these plans intertwine, and they, they work together, and so we thought it would be a good idea tonight to just present them all together, and so the city council and the public can see how, how they, um, how they mesh. Uh, the, um, the strategic plan is, you know, kind of go to the first slide there. It has five goals that the council outlined for the city staff. I'm going to go through just real briefly on a few of these, I, a few of these goals and the priorities that we're focusing on with these goals. Uh, some of them are going to defer to the capital improvement plan and the economic development strategy, because they, you know, sit within those, um, plans as well. But as we, you know, sat back and took a look at, what are, what is staff accomplishing, you know, through this year, and, you know, one of the things is, is the questions that, you know, I kind of want to raise is what's going on in the background? You know, what, what's happening, you know, that maybe the council and the public, you know, isn't seeing, and, you know, how is it important to our foundation building? And there's a lot of going on in the background. Um, there's a cost allocation plan, there's a deferred facility and maintenance needs evaluation that staff's taking a look at, there's a wastewater treatment, uh, plant, financing plan, and rate adjustment analysis that we're working on. There's analysis of events and benefits versus impacts that the, the council asks us to take a look at, the sporting destinations inventory of our facilities, uh, sustainability of our parks, and, you know, what's, you know, kind of next steps with our, our parks and our creation programs, lighting and landscape district analysis, uh, classification and compensation study, uh, Galt market analysis, there's a lot going on. And looking at our plan, and as you see our plan, the, a lot of these analyses will be coming back to the council, uh, early in 2017. Uh, so the council's going to be very busy, and staff's going to be very busy, and put these plans together, and, and bringing all that back to the council to make, uh, some, you know, decisions and, and provide direction. The, you know, as we roll into 2017, you know, we'll also be bringing back and taking a look at the strategic plan. As we talked, we like to take a look at the strategic plan on annual basis. I like to do that January, February of each year, report out quarterly, and that way we can align our strategic goals with our mid-year budget and our annual, uh, two-year budget when we, you know, align the revenues. So our budget is the other real important document that, you know, ties in, you know, with these plans. So real briefly, next slide, uh, like to go through just some quick objectives, uh, that, you know, are with the goals, that maybe we haven't talked about, you know, throughout the years since we've adopted the plan. Uh, the citywide asset replacement plan, and deferred facility and maintenance needs are some analysis that staff's working on. You know, we've kind of come to the conclusion that all of that, you know, both those priorities, we kind of work as one. Um, there, we've addressed a lot of needs and deferred facility needs, and asset replacement with IT, information technology that you hear about, a little bit more about later this evening, our vehicle replacement plans, uh, there, a lot of that has been kind of deferred through the years through our, um, economic recession, and we're trying to get back on track. So, you know, what we're trying to do is, is one, take a look at what our needs are, and then see what that, the, the cost of those needs, and then trying to address, you know, how we're going to fund those needs. What typically what cities do is put together internal service funds, uh, that, you know, you put a little bit of money in, in funds to address those future needs on kind of on an ongoing basis. Uh, one of the key documents that will be coming back to the city council in December, and I believe it's targeted for the December 20th meeting, uh, is our annual audit. And, you know, the annual audit's going to kind of lay out, you know, what the audit findings are, you know, you know, for this last year, and kind of address our fund balance, uh, balances. And once we know what our fund balances are, then in January, we'll come back with these internal service funds and, and these other deferred maintenance needs to talk to the council, uh, you know, possibly, you know, conceding some of these funds with revenue, so we can start, um, having these, uh, plans in place to address, uh, the, um, needs that we have with, uh, vehicles and, and buildings. The, um, wastewater treatment plant, financing plan, and rate adjustment plan has been before the council. Uh, we're, you know, moving forward on that, and, and, you know, a lot of these items have been addressed through the council in the last, uh, three to six months, so it's kind of a, just a refresher, you know, for you and, and the public. Pursue economic development opportunities, uh, the, you know, put the North Campus, uh, San Joaquin Delta College site on this, I, I think that's a, a very high priority for the community. You know, it's a, a topic that I think all the community can get, you know, get around and say, hey, we encourage Delta College to address the North Campus site at the Liberty, uh, road site. Uh, most recently Monday, I talked to, you know- Most recently, Monday, I talked to the San Joaquin Delta College, and they will be having their board meeting on November 15th. And in this meeting, I'll be asking the council to possibly moving our November 15th meeting to early in the day so we can attend their board meeting. That meeting will talk about the plans of the Liberty Road Site, kind of evaluate it, and get questions answered by the board from their staff. And then staff is telling me that they'll bring that back, the project, to the December 13th meeting of the board, and hopefully they'll make a decision at that time. Implementing the business recruitment retention strategy. Ms. Mendez is going to talk a lot about that in her presentation. Some of the items that are on there, on the priorities, talk about analysis of events, benefits versus impacts, and evaluating our events. Policies for rentals and sponsorships is one of those priorities. We talked to the council about evaluating that, you know, throughout this calendar year and bringing that back in early 2017 with an analysis so the council can take a look at that information and direct staff in policy direction if they so choose. Revitalization of downtown. Amy's going to talk about, a lot about that in the sets, I think, this evening, so I'm not going to address that. But it is, you know, a priority of staff that we're focusing and working with the downtown businesses and property owners. Premier sporting destination and hosting league and tournament events. And we know just through experience, we have a lot of visitors to our community when we have these league events. One of the things that came up in our strategic plan was to try and take a look at, you know, how do we become more of a premier sports location for the community, fill our hotels, have our customers that are here eat at our restaurants, go to our businesses. Our Parks and Rec Department is currently evaluating, you know, the facility needs, and, you know, bringing that back, and that kind of ties in with our internal service funds. And those plans, we are, you know, taking a look at Walker Park in the next, those next phases. You know, it certainly costs to that, but as development continues and we're collecting, you know, the revenue from the building permits, you know, for capital improvement, you know, programs, you know, we can, you know, hopefully address some needs with our parks and Walker Park. And then, you know, not on our plan, but kind of ties into this is the market ground. And we talked a lot about, you know, you know, ties in in other places with our strategic plan. But the market grounds are a very important location. It's 10 acres. We have a lot of people here, you know, on Tuesdays and Wednesdays of each week. You know, how can we capture that? Is there ways that we can reconfigure the market, possibly? We've gone through some swap processes with the market staff, with Parks and Recreation Commission, and we'll be bringing that forward to the council in early 2017 as well. On maintaining improving Galt's quality of life, the, and I apologize, the objective there's really a priority on that first objective. The objective is actually continuing to promote cultural and recreation activities. And part of that is a priority of evaluating the sustainability of our parks and recreation, and existing events, programs, and classes. And that was discussed with the council, really coming back to the council and going through our Parks and Recreation. Our Parks and Rec Director is, you know, kind of walking through and evaluating that, and we'll come probably early January, February, you know, to bring that to the council. Probably a little bit more of a discussion, you know, on walking through all of our programs and kind of the business plan behind those programs. Sustainability of the parks, lighting landscape districts, as you know, we're evaluating that. You know, staff has received some preliminary findings. We're preparing to bring a report in early 2017 again on that topic as well. The improving financial stability, I think the most important thing is our cost allocation plan. And we've brought that back, and, you know, we're working on, moving forward on that to bring that back to the council. The supportive, a positive organizational culture, this is kind of one that gets lost a lot of times. It's our city staff. It's our culture. And what are we doing, you know, to promote internally, you know, our employees, our organization? Some of the things that we talked about in our strategic plan meeting is training. Our HR department and HR directors is working on, you know, some target solutions training through our risk management authority. And, you know, what target solution is, it's a program that offers a lot of training to our employees through the computer. And not only, you know, will provide training, but it also provides a way to track all the training that the employees do so we can have a comprehensive list. And our staff is, you know, putting that together, so all of our training will be documented, you know, for our employees. Some other things, like in the finance department, they've implemented Lynda.com, which is another commuter program training that has some, you know, skill sets, you know, with, you know, Excel, Word, you know, PowerPoint, and a lot of other skills that our staff can get online for a couple hours, you know, each month and improve their skills. Of course, the police department, you know, has their annual or daily trainings and training bulletins that they go through. You know, Public Works has the, and Parks and Rec have their, you know, tailgate training on a weekly basis, monthly basis. So there's a lot of training going on, you know, with our staff. The other components in there are getting our staff out more regionally, you know, into the community. Myself have been making a stronger effort along with staff to get to some regional events in Sacramento with our economic development, you know, meeting with different boards, like their quality board, CACOG. So, you know, staff is continuing to, you know, address those priorities as the council, as we discussed with the council. And then, of course, one, the last item I wanted to address is reporting out on all of the different commissions and committees and commissions that the council sits on. The, and there's a lot of them. A lot of that is online with kind of the Justice General Commissions and Committees that, you know, the council appoints. But there's also CACOG, Air Quality, Transportation. And a lot of those minutes, or all those minutes are being transmitted to the council, you know, for their review to keep everybody up to date. If the council does, you know, at the end of the session when you report out, if there's anything that, you know, kind of, you know, comes out of those meetings that you want to talk to the council about, just report out, you know, at the end of the council meeting, that is a good, you know, opportunity to report out on those meetings as well. So, kind of, big picture. Slide didn't take too long here to go over that big picture. Any questions on that component? What I'd like to do next is have Mr. Winkler talk about capital improvement programs, kind of go through, you know, some of those, you know, quick components, and then turn it over to Ms. Mendez to talk about the sets.
Questions, council?
Thank you.
You're up, Steve. Well, endeavor to be brief with our piece here. We're kind of rolling together what would normally be three separate reports into one. So, as far as the first quarter goes, we've completed three projects in the last three months. We have one active construction project, that is our wastewater treatment plant upgrade. And we have seven projects that are in, moving towards final design stage and environmental clearance so that we could advertise for bids in the next year and two ahead of us. We'll quickly highlight the six projects shown here. As far as the wastewater treatment plant upgrade, we're at about the 98% completion. They were doing a final inspection walkthrough today to develop the final punch list. And we're putting the shoulders on their brand-new, you might have the best road in the city or outside the city market, so the new driveway after putting $20 million worth of concrete trucks and asphalt trucks and gravel trucks and delivery trucks for all the materials that went in out there, the road was pretty beat up. And so the final finishing touches here to restore that roadway, and they got it done a day before it started raining, I believe, and they were putting the shoulders on it today. So we're nearing completion on that very large project. Industrial deep well facility, you have previously heard about this as an arsenic reduction project in conversations. And we've identified that a new deep well at the industrial well site is probably the most cost-effective solution, and that'll be a multimillion-dollar project before it's completed. And we're just kicking off the design study phase for that. And so you'll be hearing more about that in the future ahead. It's intended to sort of be a twin sister to the Golden Heights Deep Well, which is able during the winter months to produce approximately 90% of the city's waters needs. Obviously, in the summer, our demand goes way up, so having another deep well that's in the arsenic-free zone should be a boon for the city going forward and will help us meet our time schedule orders so we can avoid future fines at the wastewater treatment plant. Library update, if not, Vice Mayor Payne has been asking me frequently, so what's the status? We're finally at the point where we're, hopefully, in the next week to 10 days, we'll be advertising an RFE for consultant selection for an architectural service. We're going to use the pre-screen firms that the county uses on their procurement process and piggyback on that. And we're hoping that within four to six weeks, we'll have proposals and select. And we're bringing back to you a recommendation to award that design contract so we can get moving. That's the first hurdle. The second hurdle is, we've got to figure out, we have funding for the design, but we've got to figure out how we're going to pay for actual construction, which is, we're currently estimated at about $1 million, so we're going to...
Steve, I wanted to say that I was getting pressure from Supervisor Don McCully since they had contributed $100,000. So wasn't just me, it was him as well. Don't blame it all on me.
Not blaming you, I'm actually thanking you for nudging us forward.
Oh, okay, all right, so I'll accept that.
But I didn't want you to slip out of office thinking we'd forgotten about it.
Thank you.
Anyway, hopefully, we'll have some information before you term out here. Fourth Street Expansion, you heard a little bit about this at the previous meeting. We were getting some guidance from you on how to proceed with the C Street Complete Streets project, which includes the Fourth Street furniture. Well, I'll have to think about our title since we're omitting the C Street from the, from the project as the recommended approach. But I wanted to bring back, there's a lot of interest in what's the status of the parking lot? Where's the parking lot going to be? How can we accelerate that? As you can see, right in the center of this drawing, which would be sort of across the street, between C and D, is the proposed parking lot site. It would pretty much fill up that two-block area with some landscaping enhancements as well. It will also, as a potential first phase, include a fence beautification project for, that was a previous interest of the council, to move that forward as well. Currently, the major funding source for the Fourth Street improvements are CDBG funding, which we get $150,000 at a time under our current allocation. The parking lot, to fully build out to its full plan phase, will probably need a better part of $1 million. So we're looking at, are there some advanced funding options or borrow ahead? Or can we at least get an initial all-weather lot put in out there with the grading in place? And then, as additional funds become available, proceed to blacktop that. So we'll be evaluating those options and hopefully, as we bring forward the Fourth Street furniture improvements, have more information as to how we might accelerate the parking lot project as well. The next project we'll highlight for you is probably going to be our next legacy project in terms of road rehabilitation. Gwen Owens presented on this a few months back, where she left us for City of Asheville, and Mark Clarkson's group is going to be picking this up. But as you can see, this is sort of going to be a very large project for southwestern or older-town Galt. It's bringing together five different grants totaling $5.4 million. We're going to need, we earmarked the majority of our available Measure A funding allocations for the next couple of years. It'll be the million-dollar local match to deliver on that, the 5.4 million cost share. We are completing environmental review. We're at about 90% on design. Our next big hurdle will be CTC approval, once the final plans are done. I think we're looking at probably spring or early summer CTC hearing. If funding is approved, we can then proceed to advertise the project. The question is, if, will funding be available for late summer, fall bidding? Or will we have to wait till 2018 to do that work? So, but it will be a large project. We're reaching out to property owners that'll be affected. It's going to be sidewalk infill, particularly along A Street. It's going to be bringing up ADA standards at a lot of the crosswalk locations. It's going to be adding sidewalk where none exist on safe routes to school funding. It's going to be enhancing bike lane delineations. It's going to be looking at some bulbout locations for traffic calming in conjunction with some of those ADA handicap accessibility ramps at some of the dots and squares you see in kind of purple, I guess. We're also looking at rehabilitation along Lincoln Way from Elm Avenue north to Melody, or south to Melody, I should say. That would be major roadway repairs that are needed out there. So those are some of the things that we're working on. And more to follow as we bring that project forward. But it's going to be a large project for the older-town area to try to bring some of those streets, both safe, accessible routes for bikes, pedestrians, and certainly safe routes to school. Final project we'll highlight for you tonight is a planned transit operations and maintenance facility. The area on the left shows the existing, what we call sort of our courtyard annex. That's where Parks and Recreation and our fueling facility are currently located, along with a lot of our material storage and green waste disposal materials. If you look directly south of the two buildings there, there's a big open lot. That is also owned by the city and was purchased with TDA funding, the transit funding. And so if you look to the right, that's sort of the master plan footprint. And we're probably looking at bulldozing and replacing the existing facilities there. And if we can come up with the non-transit match for the non-transit portion, put them in new housing, put in a new fueling facility, putting all of the bus parking for the city's transit program or the county's transit program at this location. We're working, we've kind of got the environmental figured out. We're working on meeting our own requirements for noise. And that, some of the buses, you know, have early start-ups at 5:30, 6 o'clock in the morning, including the transit, large commuter buses. So we've got to make sure that those starting up early in the morning aren't going to cause noise concerns for the adjacent, particularly to the east. We are directly up against residential and to the south. So we have to be locating things and putting in sound barriers as part of that project. So we'll be giving you more to follow. The next thing we'll be bringing to your attention, well, if we can figure the noise constraints out in the next few months, bring in environmental certification. With that, we can then proceed to secure the funding approvals. We have a major $2 million grant through CACOG and Caltrans to help fund this. The county's also earmarked another $1 million to help build the facility with their transit funds to pair up with our funds. And then we'll be working with Jean to see if we can find a local match for the Parks and Rec and fuel system upgrades for the city's fair share of that. So more to follow. With that, I guess we'll turn it over to Amy, and she's going to be talking about economic development.
I had a question.
Sure, questions?
Um, sorry about that, Amy. On the, and I know we didn't talk about it specifically under the goals and objectives citywide, but one of the objectives, and it deals with wastewater treatment plan, is the wastewater treatment plan, financing plan, and rate adjustments. Just reading through the status, it appears that you've got a consultant on board at this point?
Yes, we just initiated a contract and had a kickoff meeting. It's actually, we selected Raftellus, who did our water rate analysis. They'll be looking at our sewer cost of service study. And then we also will be looking at our wet utility impact fees. That'd be our storm drain, water impact fees, and our sewer impact fees, connection fees portion as part of that, and updating our CIP projects that are listed in those programs. So the, sort of the three legs of the stool for looking at our fee structures for water, sewer, and stormwater are, what are our costs of service? What are our planned operational capital needs? And what are our planned growth-driven future needs? Which would be the impact fee portion, and bringing back recommendations related to all four of those fees.
As it relates specifically to the wastewater treatment plant, we've had discussions here that, one, it appears that there is excess capacity with the upgrades that we currently are... are almost complete. There's been discussion in the past. Also, the facilities, the actual facilities that were installed would provide benefit to future development beyond the 3MGD that it currently is to, that was the upgrade to 3MGD.
Correct.
So, and I know that we had, I believe staff had given direction that we would be, this analysis would be taking into consideration a division of what is benefiting future development and should be the obligation of future development, rather than the existing rate pair, particularly on the capital side. But I don't know whether that would trickle down into the actual rates, given the efficiencies in the new operation. So I just wanted to make sure.
Certainly, a portion of the current upgrades nearing completion and the work done to date has a future growth component, and they will be looking at what's the fair share attributable to that. Then we'll be looking at our future impact fee needs for future expansion of the plant as well.
Okay. And that'll be a clear, pretty clear division in the report. I mean, I just want to make sure.
We will make every effort to clearly delineate what those are.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and members of council, Amy Mendez, Economic Development Manager. As the city manager mentioned a little while ago at the beginning of the presentation, I am going to give a overview briefly of the Comprehensive Economic Development Strategy. This is commonly referred to as the SED, just because it's such a mouthful. And the SED document is actually a requirement of economic development funding from EDA. So the Economic Development Administration, which is a, I guess they're a division under the U.S. Department of Commerce, a federal agency, they supply funding, significant funding for public works projects. But in order to qualify for EDA funding, you have to have a SED certified on file with EDA. And so in 2014, the City of Galt, City Council, as well as the SED Committee, adopted a Comprehensive Economic Development Strategy that was approved by council, by the SED Committee, as well as by the Economic Development Administration. So the certification was given in 2014 for the original SED document. And the SED is actually required to be updated annually. It stood for five years, but you have to update it annually, sort of documenting your progress on the initiatives that have been laid out in documents. And so this 2016 update has been completed. A copy was provided to you for review. This is sort of a documentation of what we've accomplished over the past year. And as we go through, you'll notice that some of the initiatives and tasks were actually accomplished years, 2014, 2015. So this is just an update of what we've done over the last year. The SED Committee was comprised of community organizations, businesses, education representatives, as well as elected officials and city staff. This is now the current Economic Development Task Force. And so, once we have the approval from, or the review at least by city council, we'll also have the review done by the task force before we submit it to EDA for approval. The city manager mentioned a little while ago, there's quite a bit of overlap between the documents in terms of the SED document and the strategic plan that the city council put together. The SED is sort of an overarching economic development plan for the city, and this is sort of higher level in terms of what the next five years looks like for the city. The strategic plan being a little bit shorter in terms, sort of outlines what tasks we're going to be accomplishing that are in coordination with the SED. And so, as was mentioned in the strategic plan as part of the Economic Development Initiative, there is the North Campus site for Delta College that's mentioned as part of that strategic plan. And that correlates directly with the SED's goal number one. There's actually an initiative that's spelled out on there in regards to education institutions and the attraction of those for Galt. And so, that's the correlation there. The second initiative in the strategic plan is the implementation of business recruitment, retention, and expansion strategies. And that actually, number two, and number one, the priority goals in the SEDs are directly correlated as they talk directly to industrial office and retail expansions, as well as attraction. Revitalization of downtown is a hot topic that, you know, we've kind of dove into over the last couple of months. And the SED's goal number three, which isn't a priority goal, but it is stated in the document, is the investment in Old Town. And then the last one is becoming a premier sporting destination for league events. And as it is in goal number four, within the SEDs, we talk directly to visitor retention and bringing visitors into Galt. There's actually an initiative that speaks directly to the expansion of the sports complex as well. So these, you know, two documents are really intertwined as you look at them. And they do tie directly to the CIPs because a lot of the funding that we're looking for could potentially come from EDA, especially as it relates to the industrial expansion area. So the SED division, this was laid out in the 2014 document, nothing has really changed outside of vision statement number three, which was related to the entertainment complex. And with the loss of redevelopment funds, the entertainment complex has sort of been tabled. That's not something we're really focusing on. And so, the new verbiage, which is actually in the strategy, the update that was put together, is just the revitalization of Old Town and the focus on attracting new businesses into the area. The rest of the vision statements remain the same. So priority goal number one, which was sort of top of the list for the SED Committee, was related to commercial business, attracting and expanding commercial businesses within the city. There's actually been three of these that were completed before we even started this update. And last year in June, the city council voted to adopt a new fee structure for development impact fees, and also a new zoning ordinance, which encompassed a new development code, kind of bringing together several different pieces of the code into one comprehensive development area. And then, the other was eliminating a big-box ordinance, and that allowed, obviously, for Walmart to come into town. The third one that had already been completed was infrastructure development. That speaks directly to the Twin Cities roundabout and widening, which allows for commercial development along the Twin Cities corridor. So those three had already been completed. The retail business walks, that really is correlated to business visits on my end. And I have been actively visiting retail businesses, as well as industrial businesses in town, heavily involved in Shop Local, working with the Shop Local group, as well as with the Chamber of Commerce, and making sure that we're outreachings to the retail businesses to determine if there's anything they need from the city, or any resources that are out there that we can connect them with. The marketing material has been completed. Many of you have seen that the marketing material that we put together, Chaven Concepts helped us put together a comprehensive marketing package for the Simmerhorn Commercial Area, the Old Town Area, as well as the Twin Cities corridor. And so I'm using that as a, you know, marketing tool, really, to send out to different retailers and brokers to make sure that they have the information on what's available here in Galt. Infrastructure development, I mentioned, as that related to the Twin Cities development. And then recruiting educational institutions, obviously Delta College is, you know, high on that list, and working with them to attract them for the North County campus here in Galt. So we are continuing to move forward with that, as they will be discussing that in November. Priority goal number two, number one, obviously related to retail, number two, was really focused on industrial attraction for new businesses, and also expanding our existing businesses in town. The revised zoning and updated development fees, that was part of goal number one, that was all done last year in 2015. And the existing businesses, calling on existing businesses, that correlates directly with the retail walks and the business retention visits. And so, those are things that I've actively been doing and speaking with different industrial users in town. Packaging the city's competitive position and telling Galt's story to brokers are sort of intertwined in terms of communicating with the industrial brokers and with the businesses to determine, to just ensure that they know what the benefit of doing business in Galt is. And it's been nice in the business retention visits that I've done to sort of get stories of, you know, Acorn Paper Products is going to be leaving, but they highlighted over and over again how great it was to do business here because of the location, because of access, ease of on and off the freeway. And so, being able to sort of communicate that to other users is really important. And so, working with the industrial brokers and with the existing businesses. The tough thing is, we just don't have a lot of industrial vacancy. And so, I'd mentioned to the city manager earlier that, you know, there's one building that's going to be vacant, where Acorn Industrial or Acorn Paper Products is vacating. And there's probably four different users that are vying to get into that space. And so, it's, you know, it's a hot market right now. I think that it's a great time for us to look at the annexation and to move forward with it. And once that land is annexed, I don't doubt that there will be a number of industrial users who can actually consider Galt because of the location where we're at. You know, you look at some of the other areas in Sacramento, really, you know, when you tie in traffic and everything else, I think that really Galt's able to set, you know, set ourselves apart. But also, working with a smaller jurisdiction, a company that I'm meeting with tomorrow, they are interested in Galt because it's a smaller area. It's working with, you know, a building department and a community development department, planning all kind of in one in Public Works, where you don't have this separation of divisions and departments. And they see that as a benefit. So I think that moving forward, communicating our story will be a little bit easier when we have some land available.
Did you say why Acorn left, or why they're leaving?
They actually, this was a decision made at the corporate level in Southern California. So it had really nothing to do with their location here. They, the manager that I spoke with was very happy with, you know, working here, thought that it was a great location for them. They're consolidating the location out of Napa and the Galt location in Vacaville. And they've had nothing but trouble trying to get the building built out. So there's some frustration, I think, at the local level, but it was a corporate decision. It had nothing to do with their operation here. They do really good business here. So it was just unfortunate. But again, there's lots of people who are looking at that space and, you know, ready to move in. And so it's just a matter of, I think, the property owner making a decision on who that is.
Do you know how many people they employed?
Twenty-three? Twenty-two, twenty-three? And most of them are, have been offered positions in the Vacaville area, but it's a really long commute, so I'm not sure how many people are actually going to, you know, take them up on it. But yeah, they were roughly twenty, twenty-two people, I think.
Thank you.
Investigating spec building opportunities was another task listed, and that related to locating property and sort of searching out industrial users who would be interested in building spec buildings, again, because of the lack of property. There's a few parcels that have been of interest. Smaller spec buildings would be required there. And right now, the market just really isn't there for five to ten thousand to fifteen thousand square feet. Users are really looking at thirty, forty, fifty thousand square feet, so. And then, infrastructure development, really that ties to the industrial area and the expansion for the annexation and how we get infrastructure to that site. And again, listing this in the SEDs is sort of a benefit for us because it's there when we can put in applications for public works projects, which infrastructure would obviously qualify for. Goal number three wasn't listed as a priority, but is obviously really important, I think, at the city level in terms of revitalizing the Old Town area. Marketing materials and recruitment was listed as one of the action items, and that's been completed as part of the comprehensive marketing package. Revisiting the specific plan and development standards tied to zoning and cleaning up some of the zoning in the city's code, and so that's been taken care of as well. Creating an identity is sort of the bigger one that we're working on. And that ties to rebranding the downtown, marketing, bringing people into the downtown. How do we create events? How do we tie the Galt market to the downtown to get the patrons down there? How do we bring in new businesses, business attraction efforts? And as the city manager mentioned earlier, you know, we have engaged the downtown property owners, we have engaged the business owners, and there's been some discussions around the creation of a property-based business improvement district, if that would be something that the property owners would be interested in, some type of district where we could lead the initiative, but really it takes the buy-in of the property owners to kind of move with that, so. Goal number four, related to visitor retention and expansion, this ties directly to the strategic plan as well, in terms of the sports complex, obviously, expanding the sports fields and the sports complex to bring people into town. How do we take advantage of our location? How do we take advantage of the facilities we have? And how do we bring these tournaments and these tournament directors into our area? And so, I know the city manager mentioned earlier, sort of the analysis that's going on behind the scenes there with our facilities, and determining what upgrades are needed in order to attract some of those bigger tournaments. Marketing and promotion to visitors, you know, we don't have a visitors bureau here, and we, you know, so it's difficult to pull together a group, to put together marketing material, and to market and outreach for some of the tourism side of things. But there is an opportunity, I feel, related to the sports fields and the tournaments, as well as the Galt market, as well as the wineries that are in the area, to really be able to pull people into, you know, the Galt community. And so, we have started discussions with the Shop Local group, who are going to be assisting us with putting together a tourism brochure. And so we have a company out of Roseville that's assisting us to put together a kind of a twofold tourism slash resident brochure, highlighting kind of a larger map of the area, where some of the wineries are that are in kind of the Acampo area, close to Galt, and some of the wineries that we have, you know, Grace Vineyards being here, as well as Hanford Ranch, wanting to make sure that those are, you know, people are aware that those are available for rent. There's wine tasting, beautiful, you know, vineyards that they have out there that people can take advantage of. So those, you know, that's who we're engaging as part of this. We're also talking to some of the retailers, the shopping centers, to make sure that they're included. We want people, when they come into town, to know where everything is, where the coffee shops are, where the shopping centers are. You know, if I'm here for a sports tournament, or if I have a break on a sports tournament, where can I go grab something to eat that's not, you know, a fast food chain? And so, that's sort of the target there. But also for the residents, just to highlight where the parks are, you know, where there is to, you know, what there is to do in town, that there's an aquatic center, that there is a downtown, some of those things, we want to make sure that we are able to communicate. And then enhancements to the Galt market, I know that this was discussed earlier, the slot analysis that's been taking place, determining sort of what the feasibility is for the Galt market, how we bring additional patrons there, how we take advantage of the market ground. And, you know, that's all taking place at the staff level right now, so. Goal number five, which was the last goal listed in the SEDs, was related to our agricultural assets, obviously having FFA headquartered in the Galt area, as well as some great programs at the high school level. How do we capitalize on that to create a food hub here in the community? This was listed as a goal within the SEDs, you know, when you read through it, it basically states that there would need to be some type of leadership, sort of, to take that initiative on. So is it the high school? Is it working with Delta College moving forward, because they do have a big tie-in with the culinary side? And so that's something we'll look at in the future, moving forward. Next steps for the SEDs really is to allow council a chance to review the documents and, you know, hear the presentation. We're also going to take this to the Economic Development Task Force to get their buy-off and make sure that they're happy with sort of the progress that's been made and the documentation that we've provided. And then we'll submit this to EDA for approval. And hopefully, we can get that done, you know, sometime in November, so that we're able to put forward applications for EDA funding, especially when the industrial park is ready for development. Are there any questions?
Counsel?
Very good.
Awesome job, thank you.
Thank you.
And this is a receive-only, so there's no vote required, correct?
Right. That is correct.
Moving on to the finance department, information technology update.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I'm here tonight to update you on the status of our information technology program. And I have a few introductory remarks that I will be making while Steve finds my PowerPoint and pulls that, the lost PowerPoint. One thing that I wanted to remind you of is that back when we were doing the budget, I talked to you in the budget process about the criticality of our IT infrastructure. We set aside money in that budget, in the fiscal sixteen, seventeen, and seventeen, eighteen budgets, to address some of our IT issues. At the last August, in a staff report that I presented to you, when we brought on Next Level Technology Inc. to help us with our IT Next Level Technology, Inc. to help us with our IT situation, I talked in the staff report about the failures we were having. We were having server failures and device failures and connectivity failures, and we were really struggling. Now, Next Level in here, they started looking at things, and one of the first things we did, you'll recall, you approved a contract to buy some Barracuda backups because we had inadequate backups. So, we've been addressing a lot of different problems. Is that working? But before I get into all the problems, I would like to tell you about the assets that we have here at the city. And our IT, our selection of programs and software and functions that we're using has been very good. The programs that we're using are all good selections, good municipal government programs, HTE, Sun Guard HTE for finance is our accounting software, which many, many cities use, Trakit and the community development. That tracks permit processing and it ties in with the Sun Guard HTE program. Police have the CADS rim system, Public Works has City Works and SCADA program. And we have Laserfish in the clerk's office. We have Vision for our website. We have a GSI program. We have class software. We have email, Microsoft Email Exchange. We have Microsoft Productivity Suite, Word. So, we're using programs that are all really good, solid programs. I wanted to also let you know a little bit about the size and the complexity of the infrastructure, IT infrastructure that we have here. Hundred and seventy desktops, laptops, devices, a hundred netgear switches and routers, twenty-five a mixture of physical and virtual service, twenty-five each of those. We have disk storage, ten terabytes per site, and when we say per site, we're talking about city hall and police. Well, those are the two areas where we have our data centers. Internet, we have point-to-point Wi-Fi connectivity. We have a pretty good internet bandwidth, a voice-over telephone system, seventy printers, and the two server rooms are the data centers. So, we have a fairly extensive and complex IT infrastructure. So, when we got into this in August and started looking at what we had going here, we found that we had a few more problems than we had anticipated. For one thing, we didn't know that we didn't, that we had inadequate backups. We took care of that as quickly as we could. We didn't have any documentation. Typically, what you do with the IT infrastructure is you have what's called a network map, which shows where all of your devices are and how they're connected. We did not have that documentation. That was something that Next Level had to research and create for us. We had some of our core infrastructure equipment was failing. I put here as an example the IVR Selectron server. That's the server that utility customers can come in, can call in and make payments on their utility bills over the telephone. That server also has an auto dial where it will dial people who are late paying their bills and remind them that the cutoff date is coming up and the shut-off date's coming up and please pay your bill. So, it's a vitally important server. Excuse me, one sec. If that server, if, when that server goes down, then we're really adversely affecting our customers. And so, it's critical to us to have that server up. Well, that server had, went down recently, and it was off for a couple of days while we scrambled to find, get a replacement for it. So, that is an example of the types of core infrastructure that are failing on us and that we're, we're just kind of behind the eight ball, so to speak. We're just scrambling when things fail to fix them. We're going to reach a point where we become proactive, but we're not there yet. We're still firefighting to an extent. We have, another thing we found was that we had unsystematic data storage capacity. The very last line on here also addresses storage, where it's siloed storage environment. Those ten terabytes of storage that were on the prior slide are not really being used effectively. They're siloed, and that's they're not being accessed by all the things that could use them. So, that's one of those things where, call it kind of a non-standard IT practice. You would typically, in a standard IT practice, you would set it up a little bit differently. We had a disorganized help desk process. All we're doing is just fighting fires all the time. And then, the non-standard IT practices that we've run into, things like custom-developed business applications. You know, it's really a nice idea to develop your own software so you can tailor it to especially exactly what you want for your organization, but it's not cost-effective to do that. There are so many software programs out there now that you really want to just buy something, as they say, off the shelf and use that and implement that for whatever your needs are. Developing it yourself means that you're going to incur greater costs. You're going to incur development costs, and then you need to have somebody to maintain that for you if something goes wrong with it, or if you lose your programmer, then, you know, it's going to cost you a lot more money. So, it's really not, for an organization of this size, it's not really a good idea to be developing your own software. It's not cost-effective. And then, we had a lack of documentation on what the current activities that were going on were. We had a proliferation of hardware with no plan for implementation, coding and customized scripts within business applications. What that means is if we have an application like, for example, the class Parks and Recreation software program where people register for classes, if the, let me see if I can explain this well, getting ahead of myself here. The software developer of the class has set in, into the program controls that will, you can use those, that you can control who has access to what, who has rights to do what within the program. But what we found is that there had been scripts written in front of those rights, in front of this access, which would prevent us from using the software or accessing the software in a customary fashion. So, we had to break through all of those. And then, we had non-IT activities that were being handled by IT. For example, the Bay Alarm. We've actually turned Bay Alarm back over to facilities to manage. That's the alarm system for access to the buildings. And thank you, Mr. Winkler, and your department for taking that back. I wanted to let you know what Next Level has been doing the last couple of months. We've been managing the day-to-day operations. Between August 10 and October 4, they closed 265 help desk tickets. They installed the backup appliance, and we're now running backups daily. And they established a standardized PC imaging process. That means if you buy a new PC for, a new desktop for somebody, the imaging process is how you set that up for the user to use it. They've done the infrastructure documentation, developed a network map and so forth. That is still a work in progress. It's not finally complete yet, but it's pretty close. We reconfigured the Wi-Fi and reset passwords. And some of the firefighting that they had to do was the police department, the access control system, the hard keys to get in and out of the police department had some problems. We had to update the administrative rights across the board. We had website troubleshooting. I don't know if you guys were aware of it, but we were having a lot of difficulty uploading things to the website. The way we structured things here at the city of Galt is that the administrative assistants each have the ability to upload things for their department. Unfortunately, that system wasn't working and hadn't been working for many months. Part of our solution to that problem is to take the website and have it hosted by Vision rather than us hosting it internally. And that's another way where you're being more cost-efficient in that if something goes wrong, if I'm an admin assistant and I can't upload something, I call Vision, they have the program, they wrote the code, they can solve the problem for me. I don't have to have, pay my IT staff to spend time trying to solve a problem on a software that somebody else wrote. So, it's really more efficient to have it hosted. That's in process right now. Hopefully, be done pretty soon. And then, the other thing that we had is the production storage problem. People, individual staff members would find that their, their computers are working slower and slower, takes longer and longer to open files, they're longer and longer to save files. And part of that is because of that problem with how our production storage had been siloed and not taking real good advantage of how do we set that up. So, one of the things we've had to do is kind of manually shuffle files around so that people have enough storage. That's the technical explanation. So, what's in progress right now? The annual PC refresh program, and that's where we replace the older machines at individual staff members' workstations. We're working on the AT&amp;T billing and circuit audit. That audit has us looking at all of the bills, all of the lines that were being billed from AT&amp;T, making sure those lines are still active and still in use, and getting rid of the ones that aren't. And that basically is being handled by, more by city staff rather than by the consultants. City Works upgrade is in process. ActiveNet is in process. Those two projects are software upgrades that will require, ideally, we would want to have a test environment in which we could test those before we went online with them. We're going to have some challenges there, trying to get enough storage or space to create a test environment. But we're going to try and get creative and figure out some solutions to that. A council chamber upgrade, I think you guys are familiar with that project. IT manager recruitment, we did release a job flyer last week or earlier this week, or the days are a blur, but it was very recently. We are updating and making sure we have technical documentation on things. Website transfer, I talked about that. Add at the wastewater treatment plant a new operations center. We've been working on getting the IT setup out there. And of course, ongoing IT operations and management. So, we have a couple of projects that we selected as critical. Attached in your packet was a list of IT projects that we need to do, and there's forty-some projects on that list, and we're not going to do all of those right now. And we attempted to prioritize those, and that priority may shift if things shift, if, you know, we start experiencing failures or we see needs that are becoming more important. Some of those priorities may shift. They're not completely set in stone. We're not going to be able to accomplish all of those right away. What we are trying to do right now are the projects that we identified as critical or already in progress. And two items that are very critical, a network monitoring tool. A weekend or two ago, we had the HVAC at city hall failed over the weekend, and the data center here in city hall got very, very hot, which, as you probably know, is not good for IT equipment. And we did not have sufficient monitoring tool to have anybody alerted that we had problems with our servers in the server room getting too hot. We really need to get a network monitoring tool implemented. That's why somebody in IT ideally would get notified if there's something going on in the server room that needs to be addressed. PD server needs to be replaced. It's kind of limping along on its last leg, getting nursed along, you know, we're just, we've got to replace that one sooner than later. And to be started, when we can find funding for it, is that storage system expansion. So, these are our funding needs. We estimate right now that with the recruitment of the IT managers, it's going to take us two to three months to get somebody onboard as a regular city employee. And then, we're going to need some time to transition with next-level consultants and an IT manager that we hire. So, we're just conservatively estimating that we're going to need an IT manager on-site from now through March. Those are part-time hours, that's not full-time. We also, the IT support services line is when we need somebody to do something above and beyond the daily management. Those are sort of special projects where we need some special assistance with them. And then, on the critical projects, that network monitoring tool and the PD server replacement, those are cost, are hard costs for software and so forth, or hardware. And then, also critical, if the funding's not identified yet, is that storage system. I wanted to put in here what I think we can need, will need to get through this transitional period, because the last thing I want to do is to keep having to come back here and ask you guys for more money. So, I'd be happy to take any questions that you have on IT at this time or on the funding. My request to you tonight is to authorize the city manager to execute an amendment with the contract with Next Level Technology. Any questions?
Counselor?
I don't have any questions. I just, I commend you and the city manager for, I think, addressing what has been a critical problem in the city for a number of years and has been basically ignored by prior administration. It's obvious that things were not being done right, and I think people knew it wasn't being done right, but no one bothered to take the time to evaluate and to the extent that you have done. And I compliment you for that. It's unfortunate, it's going to cost a lot of money to fix, but at least I think we have a path to correct a very bad situation.
One of the things that I would just like to comment on as your finance director is when the city and every, every city in the country experienced a recession a few years ago, one of the things that Galt did and every other city did is they deferred maintenance. So, Galt deferred maintenance on IT, it deferred maintenance on infrastructure buildings, it deferred maintenance on replacing vehicles. And so, you, as you know, with your own personal property, if you don't maintain it, it's going to cost you more in the long run. So, we're kind of in that situation now, and I'm very optimistic. I think we can get out of this situation. We're just in transition right now.
I want to say to be commended in all your work, for taking over IT and taking over the department, and, I mean, when you came to us, we didn't tell you you were going to have to handle all of our IT too.
Well, thank you very much, but it has been a project. You know, I don't do these things alone. I have a great team behind me.
Thank you.
Awesome job.
Yes, have a good one.
Okay, what I'm looking for is a resolution authorizing city manager to execute an amendment to the agreement with Next Level Information Technology to continue providing information technology management services. Do I have a motion?
So, move.
I have a motion by Councilmember Campion and a second by Councilmember Powers. Do we have any further discussion? Call for the vote, please.
Vice Mayor Payne?
Aye.
Councilmember Hewer?
Aye.
Councilmember Campion?
Aye.
Councilmember Powers?
Aye.
Mayor Cruz?
Aye. Yeah, okay. Moving on to communication, we have any?
No.
Okay, then, comments by staff?
Would you have any other?
I was saying, don't you have anything to help?
Oh, no, of course.
Okay.
Settle over here. You don't look like Chief Stockman.
Nice to see you.
Thank you, Lieutenant.
Chief is at a chief's conference. He's, will come back all refreshed and with a lot of new ideas.
Awesome. Why don't you start us off, Mr. Plaza?
I do, I have one item which I mentioned earlier, is the penalty Delta College and their board meeting to inform the council that right now, the information I have is they'll be having their workshop on the north campus site on November 15th at 5:00. We have a regular council meeting that evening at 7:00, and want to come talk to the council about possibly moving our council meeting to earlier in the day. I think Ms. Settles was talking about 2:00 to have that meeting, and then we'll be able to go to the Stockton and attend that board meeting.
Counselor?
The only question I would have is, and it may be too early to note, do you feel like there's going to be anything on that agenda that would be pertinent to the public attending?
Yeah, the, as you know, and myself and the superintendents of our school districts have sent out a letter to a lot of different organizations in town and businesses asking for letters of support, so we can, you know, transmit those letters to the Delta College Board to, you know, show them our support. And certainly encourage the community if they're real interested in attending this meeting. Want to understand and learn about, you know, the site and, you know, hear firsthand what's presented to the board. The board, my understanding is not going to make any sort of decision until December 13. 13th, but, you know, there may be opportunity to provide public comment at the 15th meeting. And so if our community's there, you know, there may be opportunity to provide that comment, plus it shows, you know, a support from our community when people attend.
I, that's what I was asking for, was will the city council agenda have possibly anything on it?
Yes.
That the public would?
Well, on our council agenda, I think you answered the question, the next meeting, November 1st, we'll be bringing a letter to the council, for the council to approve a letter of support to send to the Delta College Board. We also will be bringing back to the council some, you know, it's not really the MIU, but it's a letter to the Delta College District to talk about water service to the college, kind of, you know, start a memorandum of understanding, you know, with the college Board for us to provide that water service to the college site. And we'll bring that to the council on the November 1st meeting. Does that answer the question?
I believe so.
Okay.
I was just concerned that when we move the meetings up early, there are people, because of their work, that can't?
I think she's asking, what's on the 15th agenda?
Items on the 15th.
You mean the November 15th agenda? The one that we're asking to?
The one we're moving?
Yes, that one.
Okay.
Sorry if it was?
I, I don't know off the top of my head, maybe?
Well, in addition, we will have Metro Cable out to videotape, so it will be available to them after the fact. But I don't, there's California building code, the California fire code, maybe the C Street corridor. I don't see anything on here that Dispatch confirms from the police department.
Okay, thank you.
Well, what we can do is bring back to the November 1st meeting, you know, something that council can act on, move one of the time for the November 15th meeting, and we can further, you know, let you know what's on that 15th meeting.
Okay.
Now, it would appear the December 13th won't conflict with us.
The December 13th will not conflict with our meeting. Our meeting's in December?
Six and 20.
Six and 20, thank you. And sorry, I did not understand the question.
Okay.
Can I get a general consensus, we're okay with moving the meeting back, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Ms. Hood?
I have nothing to report, thank you for having me. I'm trying to fill Steve's shoes while he's on vacation, but he's, he should be back here for the next meeting on November 1st.
Very good. Ms. Boyd, anything further? Mr. Arias? Nothing tonight, thank you. Ms. Winkler?
Just a quick update, we've kind of let water conservation slip out of our view as we are no longer under a state mandate, and our actual mandated reduction is zero at the moment because we've been able to show that in the, at least foreseeable future, we don't have any immediate threats to our water supply. But that said, particularly with the rollout of the meter program over the last two years, we're still achieving eighteen percent over the prior two summers average together, and then looking at our current September, we're eighteen percent below the prior two-year average. So continue to commend our citizens and businesses for doing their, their part. We're also sending out letters to advise people with the new smart meters, we're able to get a look at if there's a potential for leakage and based on no baseline, there's continuous baseline usage around the clock, so we're starting to reach out and try to help educate people and make sure they're not paying more for water than they need to by fixing those leaks. I'd also like to take this opportunity to, one of your objectives earlier tonight was to promote leadership development opportunities, and I'm going to take this opportunity to announce to council that we have selected a new deputy director, and he's sitting at the staff table here, and we're pleased to select Mike Martin. And his first priority assignment will be to replace himself as utilities manager.
Congratulations.
All I have. All right. Ms. Mendez? Mr. Clarkson, you got to say something. Awesome job, sir. Ms. Isles? Ms. Solis?
I do, I actually have something. Staff's been working with Sacramento County Bradshaw Animal Shelter to provide a free dog vaccine and wellness clinic that is tentatively set for Sunday, November 6th at Harvey Park. It'll be a free outreach program offered to lower-income residents of Galt. This will be a three-hour event from 11:00 to 2:00, and there'll be a free program offering vaccines, microchipping, deworming, minor medical issue advice, spade and neuter vouchers. So I'll be sending more information out about that once we finalize it. And I want you to know that I signed a contract today with Travis Vega, he's a guitarist. He'll be providing guitar lessons for citizens that will be hopefully available starting in November.
Awesome.
So what was the day of the?
It is Sunday, November 6th.
November 6th. Awesome.
We'll start down here. Councilmember Hewer?
Nothing, thank you.
Councilmember Campion?
Nothing.
Councilmember Powers?
Nothing.
Vice Mayor Payne?
I was just wondering, can you tell me, are we at full force in our police department?
Still, two vacancies in Dispatch. One because we promoted one of our lead dispatchers to the supervisor's position that's been vacant since the beginning of the year. And the second one was the final spot that we were hoping to fill. So we've got progress though there, we have two strong candidates moving forward. We completed process and testing and interviews, and so if this goes well in the background with the two of those, we'll fill those positions. And then as far as our patrol staff, we do have a few vacancies, but are aggressively working to go out and do recruiting and try to find the finest?
How many vacancies we have at this time?
Well, we have some potential vacancies with some people that are possibly leaving, approximately three. Known vacancies, I believe we have two.
Okay. I think this is, I think we all agree, this is something that we want to keep in touch with because it seems like all cities are having a hard time at this time fulfilling their needs.
Yeah, there's a lot of recruiting going on and a lot of departments are down at this point, yeah.
There's definitely a nationwide, you know, issue in recruitment and trying to get police officers onboard. I was talking to Ms. Isles earlier this evening, and we are having some recruitment going on this next Tuesday or next week sometime.
Yes, for the police recruit, we are interviewing, I think, eleven candidates next Tuesday, and we currently have the police recruit open again right now. We'll be doing the agility and written exam, and we're, that will be on Saturday, November 19th, and we're going to, hopefully, we're going to try to get as many applications as possible. Last time, I think we had seven, do we'd like to have double that, so we're leaving it open for even longer. And then we're continually interviewing academy grads and academy attendees. Probably every month or so, we will hold interviews as we get those applications. So we're continually working to fill those positions.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, on that same subject, we have put together the chief and Lieutenant Kellin House to put together a recruitment team. Some of our personnel, they've developed video and a program, and they've been going out to different academies and other venues, trying to be as creative as possible and look at every possible avenue of finding good people. So that's been actively going on. In fact, they were out today at Delta College. They've gone to, you know, as many venues as they can, and they're really getting the hang of it, and they've put together a very good program, and that's moving at full, full speed.
It's like a really good idea.
We'll bring the recruitment videos to council at a future meeting.
Okay. That'd be great. I'll come and watch.
Okay. A real quick update from the League of California State, we got a lot of good information out of it. It's kind of sparse in comparison to prior meetings, but you will be happy to know that the Division Zero Resolution was approved by the league, so I'm looking forward on that one. I don't think I have anything more on that, so with that, it's been a journey.